All the meeting to order, I think, um, just for reference, John joined, but he was on a dueling.
Yeah.
You heard that, you heard that, okay. Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna just share them on screen. And my the horses that are at our property are dragging me nuts because they have a barn, they can come and go as they please. And they are insisting on standing outside in this weather despite having the ability to come into a nice warm barn with plenty of hay at any time that they so choose, and instead they're getting soaking wet and out in the wind and the rain.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's what they choose. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order the town of North Stonington Sustainability Committee Zoom special meeting of October 26th, 21. Starting the meeting at 7:08 PM. So for roll call, Alexis Khan present.
Pat Turner, present.
I didn't catch it. Craig, did you say present?
I tried to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, present. John's present too.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. And Nathan, did you, or do you prefer Nate, right?
Doesn't matter, but usually I go by Nate, but I'll answer to either one.
So I'll mention that you're joining, you've joined our meeting as well for today. So I maybe should wait until, I'm gonna skip ahead for some, some of the items, just until John rejoins. The one thing, so in our last meeting, just to kind of make you aware, Pat, we had someone who had joined that Craig had invited as a potential prospect for the sustainability committee. It was Casey, and what was her last name, Craig? I can't, I was doing the minutes and I couldn't remember her last name. And I hadn't recorded the point at which she had mentioned her last name.
Oh gosh, what's Casey's last name? I will get that to you for the purposes of the minute.
Okay.
I haven't talked to her since, so I'm not sure if she has sustained interest, but I expect so, it's just a matter of, I guess, one thing is, maybe we didn't make clear at that meeting, like, what what she should do if she was interested other than maybe show up again.
Right, I, I, I do know that it's, you know, we went to Antoinette in order to kind of be sworn in, that I think they were going to want, right? But yeah, certainly if she, I know that she had expressed some predilection for social media, so potentially that could be kind of her niche if she were to join, kind of promote us on social media. And certainly that might help drum up some additional members. I have asked some other friends that are a little on the fence, I haven't quite committed to joining a meeting to kind of test it, test the waters. I haven't gotten any kind of confirmed commitment, but does anybody else have any other ideas for drumming up new member interests or anything along those lines? tricky, I know, to get people's attention and also dedication of their time. I can also talk to, you know, other, maybe, maybe we could do, you know, a couple of social media posts or something on behalf of the town, that something, because I know that they posted it on the website, but no, unless it's an active solicitation, something that's more current, maybe that's why it's kind of falling a little by the wayside. So I'll follow up to see how we can have that done. We, I'll skip review of previous minutes, oh no, actually, John's been gone the past two meetings. So actually, I think we can review the meeting minutes without him. He wouldn't be able to say whether or not they were accurate or, or not. So I will pull up, just for reference, I've been in Tula's absence, I've been attempting the meeting minutes, so I guess be kind. This is the first town meeting minutes I've taken. So just forgive me if I didn't do it in the way that they were supposed to be done, but I tried to follow her the way that Tula had done the prior ones. So I can send these to you afterwards if you'd like to review them, but I'll just kind of show you a quick. You were, oh, yeah, I was forgetting, Craig, you're not able to review anything because you're on your phone. So maybe I'll just, can I email these all out to you and maybe we'll next time vote on whether they're approved? Does that work? Because I know we usually review them on the screen and kind of approve them as we go, but that may not work for tonight's purposes. Okay, so then I wanted to kind of bring up the initiatives that we wish to focus on. So any ideas? I wanted first to go back on what we had discussed the past two meetings with Craig in particular, which was sort of the energy audit through Eversource. And just to kind of recap where we were, and please Craig, feel free to jump in or disagree, you know, edit any of my comments. But I think where we stood last time was that the, the official Community Partnership for Energy Efficiency Engagement Initiative, which you had initially been looking into, seemed much too hefty and kind of broad reaching of an application process, maybe for our goals and needs. And so I think the last discussions that we were having surrounded, actually, let's go to the next one. What we could do on sort of our level and make it our own in some capacity of outreach to residents, residents of North Stonington, as well as maybe some subsidizing of energy audits that are, you know, already, like, the program exists. And it's just a matter of maybe promoting it internally within the town, as well as for those who wouldn't be able to, either wouldn't be able to afford, or those who just wouldn't opt to pay for it, maybe helping through some sort of grant, whether it's through a sustainable CT grant, or whether it's through Eversource grants that exist outside of this larger engagement initiative program. Whether we could put something together that's a little bit more on our scale. I think the way that we left it, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we were gonna look into kind of what exists with Eversource and what kind of tools and resources they have that we might be able to adapt. And then depending on where that stood, potentially we would look into finding out whether this is something we could get a grant through Sustainable CT for. So I don't know if you have any updates that you were able to share, Craig, that would be able to share?
Yeah, so, so I spoke to someone at Eversource, so they have a Wise Use Department essentially. And that's all about sustainability and efficient energy use. So there, they have marketing materials within that that they, they hand out. I was supposed to get a call back this week from, I need to borrow, but someone there who could talk more on like a larger scale. I didn't get that call, I called back today and wasn't able to get in touch with anybody, but the short of it is that, to my understanding, that, that program exists. There is already in place a low income availability option within Eversource. The typical program is, they have, they have a free online sort of virtual assessment that they do, and then to have an in-person assessment that runs fifty bucks. The potential for, you know, what you get, because on the other side of these programs, you know, when people come, they, they bring all the and, and is free of charge, uh, replacement bulbs and, and they do all the energy efficiency additions they do, once they're there, are free of charge. Of course, there's a fifty dollar fee, but that is waived in low income situations. So I think, piggybacking off of that, I think there's certainly a potential for us additionally create some type of grant program for, for people who don't quite fit the parameters of low income, but maybe still needs some assistance. So I guess all that to say, work in progress, but making progress. And I think the first step is just, is getting some of those resources that we could potentially cater a little bit towards Stonington, and then figuring out steps for making the actual program more accessible to people in town. So I think there's something there working on.
Now, Craig, do you think it makes sense for, are we at the point where you think it's worth talking to Abe at Sustainable CT about a potential grant program, you know, crowdfunding match? Grant? Or do you think that we're, you're not quite there yet and you want to do some further diligence before we kind of bring in that facet?
I want to have this, I want to have that conversation that I was hoping to have already, but will have with, with the woman who's in charge of that program. Because essentially, I want to see what has been done on town-wide levels elsewhere, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. Because I estimate it has, and I've told it has, but I don't have any sort of like meat on, on what that looks like. So I like the idea of sort of bouncing off of what has worked for people elsewhere. So, you know, if we need to sort of start something from scratch, then we can do that. But my estimation is that we won't have to, and it will be more efficient to to bounce off of what has been done before. So I'm hoping to have more on that.
Okay, that's great. That makes a lot of sense. Um, any other sort of things that have been circulating in any of your minds in terms of a new initiative that would want to kind of steer your head through this committee?
I wonder if, if there's been any information about the textile recycling piece. I just, since we talked about it, I noticed it, its existence in two other places.
Yes.
All of a sudden, it's on the radar.
Yeah.
And you start seeing it everywhere, I guess that's how things work.
Yeah.
But I still love the idea. I'm thinking about all the old rags I have in my house, now I'm knocking them away until I figure out what to do with them.
Yeah, it's so funny, I was just cleaning out some closets and cleaning something out in our basement. And it was so funny because I was like, oh, I have to throw these, you know, my initial inclination would have been to throw them away because they are in terrible shape and not reusable in any capacity. And then I was like, so if I hadn't found out about, you know, because you see those boxes and you don't really know ultimately, you know, you just assume certain things can be donated through those boxes and, and certain things are not qualified for it. And then when we were reading, going into the information on their website about what you can donate, it was so much broader reaching than I think any of us had initially expected. Really, they said, like, they just want to take anything, anything that could potentially have the fiber broken down and, and recycled in some capacity. It's not just like, oh, clothes that can be worn by someone in, you know, its next life. And so I was like, oh, okay, now I'm saving it and I'm driving around with a big, I just did it over the weekend, so it's driving around with that big bag in my trunk, waiting to drive by one of those boxes. So I think this really underscores in my mind the, just kind of awareness of that that's, you know, don't throw away those things. They, they do have potential recycling after life. So I think it's, it's potentially like an educational thing rather than just, you know, the actual presence of the boxes. So to answer your question, Craig, I did bring it up to Mike and Christine to find out who the right point person at the schools would be. Because just Pat and John for your, and Nate, for your reference, they state, they say textiles, and this is their website here. They said, the contact with whom I spoke said that our highway foreman had already reached out about getting one of the boxes at the transfer station, which she was very pleased about. However, she said, the, as a town, when they service other municipalities, what they typically find is that there's more uptake when the schools get involved, when there's a box at the schools, and the schools are really educated on, you know, kind of having it be part of a larger dialogue around recycling. And so I reached out to Mike and Christine, who then reached out to Peter Nero, the superintendent of the school, to see, you know, kind of what he thinks would be, you know, how we could implement this on a school level. And I haven't, to my knowledge, haven't heard back from Peter yet. I'll follow up again on that. But I think the next step is really to try to see how we could get it in the school, since the transfer station, it sounds like, is already maybe in, in the works. But I think, you know, to kind of go back to what I said earlier, I feel like if it's even just a matter of greater education about where, you know, if you see a box, even if it's at the transfer station or some other place outside of town, that we know that you have the option to recycle a lot more different types of textiles than otherwise expected.
Yes.
And actually, that, that makes, raises a good point, which I haven't, I'll circle back on later, but the sustainable North Stonington. I'm not sure if I had indicated any information about this, and I think it was kind of early last time when I started giving content to James Russell. So that could be something I add, have him add to the site.
Well, if you don't get, if you don't get anywhere with the schools, the library.
Ah, right.
Would be interested.
That's a really good point. Do you think I could just reach out to the library to find out if they would want a box?
So if, yeah, I mean, we don't want to put boxes everywhere. If you don't get somewhere with the schools, the library, I'm sure would, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Good idea. I think, I mean, the benefit of having it at a school is not so much that it's at a school, it's around the block from the library, but getting, getting kids involved, right? Like getting, getting that awareness, they tell their parents, they go home, and all those kids and all those households bring all their stuff.
Right.
Again, right, to education, yeah.
So I'll keep you posted, I'll follow up again, as I said, he hasn't seemingly responded, but I'll, I'll follow up on that. Anything else on? Craig, that, that was one thing that you had asked about, anything else that you wanted to bring up?
So currently.
Anyone else on sustainable sustainability initiative that you're interested in, kind of spear, having the committee spearhead?
Um, if I may, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but at the end of the day, one of the thoughts that I've had was on the I-95 interchange, we have the park and ride. We actually have two of them. One that's across the street from the Shell Station at exit 93, and then one that's over on the, off of, of a two. The thought was, is clearly the state of Connecticut owns that land, maintains it and runs it. What would be the possibility of creating some sort of a recharging station at that park and ride? So that you could use it as a place to recharge an electric vehicle?
Well, that's a cool idea.
I mean, again, it's one where I know that with the current discussions in, in, across the land, there's been a lot of supposed dollars available for funding such things. But I know trying to find some places in North Stonington that you could put those, because the infrastructure itself is going to take a while to potentially develop. As we switch over to more electric vehicles, we're going to need more electric infrastructure. And having that available makes it easier for people to clearly travel along the I-95 corridor. That's one big piece, but also just being able to, if you need a place to go rapid charge and you're out and about, you can go hit that and get some energy and not get stuck, you know, away from home.
Does anybody know what the process is to get a, I could always ask this, I know it was an item on the sustainable, the Sustainable CT Action Plan. So I could always contact them to see if they have any knowledge of how to institute something like that, but does anybody happen to know? Okay, I can ask them, I would assume that they hopefully should know if it's one of the action items, they could at least point us in the right direction. So yeah, I can, I can follow up with the Sustainable CT people.
I have a bit of background in the space, I didn't call off mute quickly enough. There is federal, state, and sometimes local incentives at a county level for rebates, grants, and various different incentives that can be applied for, but the first thing that would need to be done is the state of Connecticut would have to allow permission to have the infrastructure put in place. And that usually is the biggest hurdle. Everything else tends to fall into place pretty quickly once approval. And that, those two corridor areas are, it would actually make sense to coordinate with Rhode Island as well, because there's one up road with Rhode Island. That means you'd get north and southbound as well, and you'd be in a sweet spot for infrastructure, for regional transit, last mile vehicles, and consumer vehicles. So it's a, it's a very good idea. It's, it's getting the permission to actually structure them and put them in place from the state.
I think that's a, that's a much, a good place for them because it's relative, it's connects to 95, it's good location. But it could be complicated because it's state property. In town, a very reasonable place would be the Red Building. It's central, there's room there, you know, it's, it's a good place in town, but this, the two you mentioned are, would be great if they, if it's feasible to do it.
Do you know, John, what the application, how one goes about the state application process?
I, I know fully the application process for state, federal, and local funding, both public and private. What I'm not clear on in the state of Connecticut is getting permission to utilize a state-owned property, so that would require some homework. But I got full access to the, the, the grants, rebates, and incentives.
And Nate, you said, so those park and rides, they're, they're state property, they're not, they're not town?
Yeah, I believe they run by the state. So we would need to get, clearly, somebody at DOT that's going to be able to have, you know, authority over them to get in touch with them. I mean, it might be it, you know, the state delegation might be able to help get a meeting set up, get us in the right place. Reach out to the state, state delegation and see what their, what their thoughts are. Again, it's one of those where you sort of put the ball in their court and, and let them, you know, take, take it, you know, run with it. I know, I know that, I just came across the river from Westerly, there's going to be several of those that are going to be going into the parking lot around Town Hall and downtown Westerly. But again, there's, it's finding the right locations. But it also could be that they've already got some kind of plan at the state level, that they're already putting some of these in along those park and rides or along the corridor, so that they can get it more accessible to electric vehicles. But I think that's going to be a major constraint as we move forward. And the adaption, adoption of more energy, you know, electric cars, availability as you're moving around. There's going to be a constraint that we're going to have to overcome. So, but again, I think it's, reach out to the state delegation and see if they can help point us in the right direction. And see what the state DOT says. And if not, identifying a location that perhaps the town controls the land that would be centrally located or in a, in a place where it would make logical sense to put them as well.
The typical recommendation for electric vehicle infrastructure is to put them at destination locations. They're installing them all over the place, but when you install them in a neutral area that doesn't have any true services related to it, they just tend to be infrastructure that's not used. They'll look for, you know, something that people could take advantage of, whether it be, you know, restaurant, a park environment, something. But a neutral location that looks attractive, because it's, well, you always doesn't tend to allow for utilization, allow people to really take advantage of it.
And that sort of speaks to my question, and I'm just totally naive on it, like, if one has an electric vehicle and needs to be charged, what's the timeline? Like, he says rapid charge, I think. Like, how long does one have to sit in order to get some, enough charge to get to the next, you know, reasonable destination? Because right to that point, a park and ride, you sit there and wait for somewhere where you're doing something else.
I could get into the math for everybody, but it's a little boring. It has to do with the size of the battery in the vehicle. And they typically, in the US range, the standard's going to be somewhere between sixty and 125 KWH for the battery size. And to get a decent DCFC charge off of it, which is a fast charging device, it's going to take about ten minutes to give you, you know, about a hundred miles. There's, it depends on the size of the charger too, so there's a lot of factors involved. But it could all be, it's all relatively straightforward math to figure it out and understand what might be advantageous. The cost of a DCFC or a fast charging station runs somewhere between fifty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for the charger. Then you have to allow for the infrastructure behind it to power it. So it's a, it's a bit of a process. And there's also advantages to doing, you know, what they call level two chargers, which are in about nineteen point two KW. They will charge a vehicle at a pretty good clip if you're sitting there for an hour or two. So you can get a decent charge off of that if, stop at a restaurant or something like that. In these days, most of the infrastructure is fully funded between state and federal government. So there's almost zero dollars in outlay. It's just getting the sites. It's getting access to the sites to be able to say, you want to do it.
I didn't know that it could be as little as ten minutes. I always have seen that it would be more like an hour.
No, you can, you can really, you can buy pretty big chargers these days. They go up to three hundred and eighty kilowatts. So you can charge a sixty-five watt hour battery pretty quickly on a device that big. They, they ramp down at about eighty percent of the battery's capacity on the vehicle, because it damages the battery to charge them that fast at the top end, but you can still get a pretty good charge very quickly.
Wow. That's really interesting. And actually, you know, that's another thing about just like awareness to a certain extent, because I, my husband and I were just talking about electric vehicles, and he was saying for his next car, he's probably going to get one. And I was saying something like, oh, well, you know, we'll have to make, make sure that one of us still has a regular vehicle, because then if we're, you know, because we have family in New, whatever, this is a boring story. But the point is, I was thinking, well, you know, who's on a trip all the way down to New Jersey is going to sit for an hour just waiting for your battery to charge. And, you know, just assuming that it took a lot longer and not knowing that it can be done a lot more quickly. So that kind of knowledge of just the general, you know, general public that you can, you know, use one of these cars and get around just as easily potentially as having regular cars.
Tell your husband to wait about six months to a year, because all the good ones are coming out this year.
Yeah, that's what he's planning on doing.
Well, John, John, you would know, but I read that one of the holdups is just working with Eversource and getting the infrastructure in, and that that's why Grotten in Norwich have quite a few stations, because they have their own utility companies. And so that, that's one of the holdups.
It is, there's, you can get access to the land to set the infrastructure in place. You can, you can pretty much ignore the utilities, which they hate. They really want to be involved in this, because it's functionally pulling away from their revenue stream. A lot of the installations actually use alternative energy. A lot of the installations actually use alternative energy sources or renewable energy, so. The utilities get nervous about that. And to coordinate with utility, they, they want to dictate location and everything associated with it. Because of where their infrastructure exists and they. My experience is every utility of the United States, except the private ones, tend to drag their feet in this space. So your, your perceptions are spot on. Utilities, they don't like hearing this out loud, but they're not really a friend to this type of approach, they feel it's. They want to control it, they want to manage it, they want to handle it, and they've. They were the first in on this, the federal government, the state governments, when they think about power, they immediately go to the utilities and the utilities are. Kind of dragging their feet with it, so there's, but there's a lot of different ways to approach it so that you don't. Have to use utilities, you can use battery storage systems, you can use solar arrays. All of which are funded at a federal and state level, so you could almost build an entire infrastructure. Almost, and in two instances we're doing right now in New Jersey and Massachusetts, they're literally fully funded and these sites are. Half million dollar sites, so. The state and federal government is kicking in a lot to get this done, it's just the, the big challenges. Designating the property. I'm happy to help if somebody can point me in the direction of acquiring the land, because I don't know how to do that, I never have known. I, it's just not part of what we do, it's usually somebody says, here's the property, go ahead. But if I could get assistance with that, I'd be happy to help.
Anything else on that? I, I had thought of just before we leave number five, I had thought of something, I don't know if it would be popular slash. What you, you all think about this, but. Maybe the wrong town, but I, I was inspired by the Tim Pedler, which has. Like a meatless Monday, you know, dinner meal, and I was thinking, oh, I wonder if. There would be the opportunity for maybe some of the other. Restaurants in town to kind of adopt something similar, like have, you know, let's say a special for the, for Monday to be. Something meatless and that maybe there could be some sort of, I know we've been talking a lot about little flyers and brochures and things like that, but if. You know, there could be something that at the. Takeout desk or something like that, where there would just be like a little flyer that anybody that was interested in. Learning more about like, you know, here's why this Monday does, has certain benefits. So, you know, it's not just like, oh, why, why do we do this Monday? That if the restaurants would be willing to kind of just have some sort of little card that would have a couple of different factoids. So I don't know if the local town restaurants would even have any interest in doing this, or if they would all just say pound sand, but I was thinking of. You know, kind of at least floating the idea past a few of them. I don't know what the committee thinks of, of that, but it was just an idea that I had.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's a nice way to raise awareness around. Energy use associated with. Meat eating and all that comes with that, you know, it sounds, sounds nice, I know a lot of restaurants tend to be closed on Mondays. Specifically ones in town.
That's a good.
Really wanting something from there and been.
Maybe it could be a different day, I just know that that's like a, you know. Like a thing, rather than, but.
Meatless Thursdays just doesn't sound as good.
And I think, I know. I think it would have to be, if there was anything. A flyer, for example, I know it would have to be crafted in such a way that was very sensitive. You know, obviously, we have a lot of farmers in town and we want to be really supportive of them, so, you know, it'd have to be very diplomatic and. Not in such a way that would in all, in any way insult or, you know, offend what they do, so I think it would have to be. Very carefully crafted, but I was, it was just something that I had thought of, as I said, I think Tim Pedler had it, and I was like, oh. Wonder if this could be something a little bit broader, again, like support local. But also kind of raise awareness about sort of the meatless Monday concept.
Well, if, if the tin peddler does it, I mean, they also carry local meats, so they're, they're going both ways.
Right, exactly.
They, they can get away with that, I guess.
I think they promote T bone Tuesdays, so.
Yeah, again, it's not like, it's a very equal opportunity thing, you know, it's just having a. Yeah, they do a great job of, like, I think all of their. Their beef is Lewis beef, yeah, they, you know, they have it right on the menu. Okay, maybe on to the next thing, which I am very eagerly awaiting to hear about, John and Nate, I think you participated. I, I had a work thing all day, but the Sustainable States Community Energy Challenge, there was the introductory meeting on. October fourteenth, so is there anything that you could share about that, what, what, what did it involve and what was discussed and? What should we know about this?
Go ahead, Nate.
I think the, my takeaway from it is that there's a suite of tools available and, and that. We're, we're going to be marching down the pathway of, of working with this, this group. You know, it's primarily led by the Great Plains group out of Minneapolis. And I've worked with them before, actually, in my, in my prior life, so it's a good, good solid group. But it's one of those where they're going to provide some technical expertise and some technical tools to allow for. The creation of a climate plan and, and a adaptation plan, you know, sorts. And it really starts with an inventory of the existing carbon use for the town. They talked a lot about on the call, a little bit about. That the level of specificity that comes from this has been a bit of a concern for some. Communities, some have jumped in with both feet and gotten a very detailed use. Of how much carbon's being consumed in the community and then using that as the baseline to trying to, to, to knock it back. On creating a plan to help reduce overall carbon usage in the, in a, in a community. They also, they talked about that some of those communities have gone in way, way specific, and some of them have been more using estimate tools. Other than downloading the estimate tools that they provided us, I haven't had a chance to revisit the question. They are also going to, so that's sort of that beginning stage process of. Setting the stage to become and create a sustainability plan. Over the long haul is kind of what the, the program is about. They're going to have clearly technical experts from across the country that we'll be able to lean on while we're doing that. I think there's going to be a call that we're going to be participating in here in the next, they're working on scheduling now. That call is going to be really a one-on-one call, Mike is going to be involved with it from the town's perspective, yeah, there we go. Bob is also going to get a handoff on this from Mike. So that we can continue to work into the next administration. And then I'm been asked to do at least the town level staffing on it and be involved and follow the process. Clearly, if it comes to the full fruition of creating a full plan, that's, it's going to be more of a planning office function anyway. But it, it fills, it fits into a lot of work that we're going to be doing on. Plant and conservation and development over the next few years as well. So I think as we participate in this, we have that one-on-one call coming up, and I think that'll help us focus a little more. On what the next steps are, because it seemed to me a little bit less specific the first calls. But I think that the, the big process is to have that plan pulled together.
Yeah, so I, I was trying to kind of gauge like what. Are they really doing a lot of, is the expectation that they're going to do a lot of plant holding with the technical assistance piece? Because it just sounds like so. A big undertaking, you know, in terms of the internal town resources to do something like this.
Yeah, and they, I think they recognize that not all communities are built the same with the same level of, of staff. I mean, clearly North Stonington, we don't have a, an entire department like the city of Minneapolis or St. Paul would have. It's, it's me, hey guys, I'm one man gang, so I think they recognize that there's a staffing level. Question, but also some of the estimate tools that they had, I think are probably pretty close. It's really going to be a question of, you know, accessing, you know, how much. Getting records from grid or, or working with some of the local oil companies to find out how many gallons of oil they're, they're, they're. Selling in North Stonington, things along those lines, but you can also do a lot of estimates just based off of, okay, we have. X numbers of houses in town, we, we believe there's a certain percentage of oil, a certain percentage of gas, a certain percentage or, or, or more sustainable. May, maybe solar, electric type of thing, so we start getting a bit, an understanding of those bigger numbers. When we get that, then we get down to the, the ability to do an estimate. That they've, they, they said that those estimates are actually very accurate, their tools that they have. Are, are quite good, and it can be based off of just sort of the general, generic numbers of how many houses do we have? And so I think the plugging in some of that basic data, we might be able to have a fairly good baseline model, and then from there, we start. Breaking it down and saying, okay, how do you attack the major energy consumption sectors of the community is going to be. You know, how do we deal with automobile, how do we deal with? If conversion of oil versus others, other sources of home heating or heating infrastructure there. But I think there's also, this might also drill into some specific projects that we might be able to attach to this. I haven't gotten the details on what those projects would be, it's just a couple of conversations with Mike and Bob about. Focus on it, but I'm, I'm looking forward to the next meetings to sort of get a little better flushed out ideas to. Where, where this is going to end up going, because I think it could be a, it's important, it's timely, we're going to be looking at the, the plan of conservation and development. Has to be updated by twenty twenty-three, and if we have these concepts being talked about now, it's the perfect time to fuse that into. Our, our, our overall town plan the next year, so I think it just steps to the, to the process. And then when you start looking at policies that the town is putting in place, it really does flow quite nat, quite naturally. Into the overall plan, so it really becomes almost a subset of the, the plan of conservation and development, so I, again, I, I want to. I, I'm a no enough to be dangerous at this point, but I think it's a, it's a unique opportunity. The people that we are working with on this are clearly national leaders on the, on the subject. They've helped communities write these types of plans all over the country and we can probably benefit from that greatly.
It'd be interesting to see if you could get some of the farming community involved, because probably one of the biggest. Carbon offset initiatives that could be implemented in the town of North Stonington is methane. And it's incredibly unpopular in a community like this, but it is one of the biggest areas of impact. And some of that can actually be converted into relatively productive. Resources for a community as a whole, but it's, it's getting the farming community on board.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I've seen, it's been a while since I worked in the subject area, but it's one of those where I've seen a lot of. Interesting things with digestors that, especially digestors being put co, co-located with dairies. Where you have a, a clear. Source, and then using that as a source to be able to create and capture methane, and then in turn using that to fuel vehicles or to fuel. You know, pieces of equipment, so there's, there's opportunities that are there, it's just again. I think the adaptation, who's going to adopt that first, and then is it going to cost a lot of time, effort and money on their part? Or is it something that's an easy turnaround for them, that, that, that I think is part of the calculus as well. It's tough enough being a dairy farmer, let alone having to scoop all the poo into a big, big pit so you can catch the methane. Although maybe that's a good thing, I don't know, I've seen some really amazing work that, that. Obviously, I come out of Iowa, I come out of the Midwest, and there's been a lot of thought about this over the last year. Some goods, some has been very successful, some has not. And we were optimistic about more things a few years ago, and then. You know, recent years have seen a change in attitudes to the negative, so.
The digester is that, I'm, I'm going off of just what you explained, is that the actual pit? So it's some sort of contraption on top of the pit that converts.
Yep, that, there's processes that you can put the, so basically you take all the poo together and you put it in a big giant and you run it through some processes. As an outcomes. What looks like a baggie full of. We had a presentation about it at a committee meeting one time, it looks like a baggie full of marijuana, actually, it's quite funny. Everybody was quite stunned when the guy from DNR pulled this thing out, and they thought he pulled out a giant bag of marijuana, come find out what it was. It was the dried off tailings of a digester. And then clearly then you're also capturing the, the methane, the natural gas, and they were capturing that and using it to fuel. Machinery and equipment on, on the, on the farm. And it was, it was quite a, an integrated system, the problem that we'd ran into is. They had a couple of commercial scale opportunities for this. And unfortunately, they weren't able to, they ran out of money before they were able to turn the keys, then turn it on. And again, it's, it's one of those where there's been, all of a sudden, the work just stopped. Because the funding and, and the thought process in, in local and, and federal governments, just, it just dried up and went away. People quit talking about it, because the political priorities changed, which unfortunately that happens. Elections have consequences. So I think it's one where it, the, you, you, there's things like that, it could be very interesting for North Stonington. Because we do have the ability to lead on that subject in a way that other places don't. And can't.
If I'm not mistaken, it could be because it's, I just don't do this, it comes up as a subset of some of the things that I. Get to look at day in, day out, but I think one of the most successful methane collection programs in the country was actually based here in Connecticut. Laurel Brook or something like that, I could look it up, but it, it was a relatively successful program. That I think is still producing positive. Results, but I'll look it up after the call tonight and see if I can find my notes on it and forward. The information to everyone on the call, but. As I recall, was one of the leading initiatives in the country for methane capture.
I know my, one of my, this is an odd story, but one of the guys I was in the hospital with, because he was born the same day I was. John actually is using methane capture off of the local. Sanitary facility, they're capturing that methane, and that's what they're using to, to fuel all of the city vehicles in my hometown. And John's, John's a pretty amazing leader on this, on the topic, but it's, it's really. Again, you just have to have somebody who's willing to put that jigsaw puzzle together, and it is, can be complex, but it's also. It works, all of a sudden, you're running a natural gas fleet instead of the, an oil-based fleet. But in, in North Stonington's case, we don't have a sanitary sewer plant, so at least not yet.
Oh, I was going to say, if, if it does, John, if it does end up being that the Laurel Brook farmer. That the farm that did this was indeed in Connecticut, I want, I'd be curious if. Um, I want, I'd be curious if the fact that that happened here was because the state had particular hand or funding in really backing the cost of it in some way or subsidizing it, and therefore maybe that, that, those kind of funds are still available. Um, you know what I mean? Well, you know, what, what made Connecticut conducive to that kind of program, whether it was just pure money that was put towards something like that?
Uh, uh, you know, just sitting here in the last minute or two, I did find it. It is Laurel Brook Farm Compost Project.
Good memory.
Um, so it's in East Keenan, and I'll, I'll forward the link. I, I haven't read through it, uh, but it's a it looks pretty interesting, cause it says it's one of the last remaining dairy farms in Connecticut, and it's kind of amusing when you think about our, our town.
Is it a good deal? Oh, sorry.
I feel a field trip coming on.
That's a good idea. Um. I hear background. I don't know if someone's trying to say something or whether it's just a-
I think it's me. I started making noise, cause I had to turn my car on.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm wondering if, also is it, um, I thought I had read in some cases that um, it could be a revenue generator for the farms and in the case of dairy farms that do, are so challenged by the ability to just make a profit. I wonder if that could be like a carrot, if there is some sort of way that it actually can be profitable, just the methane portion of the capture. Um, you know, whether that would be a way to kind of encourage them to do it if there's some money to be made on it, but I don't know if that's part of the assessment. John, do you happen to know?
No, I don't. I really don't. I just um, what I'm always directed to and what we're always reading on is, you know, how do we help reduce carbon footprint in a relatively significant way? Unfortunately, if there's not a lot of electricity behind it, we tend to focus uh, our, our attention in different directions, and I don't think the um, this type of project has that level of power behind it, that it would be something that we could help with at a significant levels different set of technologies. So I just remember hearing about it. I don't remember a lot of the details. But I, I did find the site for it, so I'll forward that to everybody.
Thank you. I mean, it's a great, um, I mean, when you think of it, began about the demographics or sort of the composition of our town, I feel like anything that could involve dairy is certainly good.
I'll stand right behind you, Nate, when you bring it up in public. It's something that uh, like about a hundred yards.
Yeah, so it's great to stand behind somebody, you know, as long as we don't have to stand behind bestie the cow, we're gonna be okay.
That's funny. Um, I'll share this uh, doodle poll thing that um, it's just a link to this, to, so in essence, if anybody is interested in joining, it looks like the best, you, you know, kind of the common, pick the common ones that Bob and Nate are available. Um, I'll add myself and cause I, cause they didn't, you know, i- i- I wasn't able to make the last one, but I, I am interested in this one, so I'll see if I, my calendar will enable me to join, but I'll, I'll, if anybody else is interested, I'll, um, just, if you wanna fill out the Google poll.
And I just realized that, I mean, if you want it, Nate, I don't have your email address.
You can, if you hit the town website, you can get it there, but it's nrickert@uh, northstoningtonct.gov. So N is obviously N, and Reickert is R E I C H E R T.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Pat, any updates on the Pollinator Pathways program? I imagine not, since you've been away, but I just thought I would ask.
Exactly. Uh, we've, we've gotta get back on board with uh, funding and uh, not yet. One of my people, you know, I came back, one of my other people's away right now, but sometime everybody will be here. I don't know when. But we have to sign the signs and people that have made the pledges to be part of it. Uh, some of them have the signs and are posted, but we will get funding and, you know, projects are in line to start in the spring and go see where things go. I don't have anything new right now.
Okay, no, no problem. Just wanted to give you that, the opportunity for the floor if you had anything to share.
My floor is here.
I also wanted to um, just show, I had provided um, some content to James Russell, the town IP administrator, I think. Um, just in terms of kind of populating this page, which is live. Um, so we have, you know, I'll, I'll send, I think y'all have the link and as you see, you just can Google it. Um, but a little bit about, you know, who we are and whoopsies, I somehow yeah, sorry. Um, projects is not uh, populated yet, because we haven't I, I, I think don't really have quite anything that is at the point at which it's really codified enough to share, but um, we can certainly add something if anybody, you know, if we think we're there on something. I, after the next um, uh, the next meeting for the, you know, after we do this um, one-on-one, I, I think maybe there'll be something where we could add on that. Um, Pollinator Pathways, I just kind of took a lot of information from the Pollinator Pathway website. Um, and you know, favorite plants and why it's done and that kind of thing. Um, then what I wanted to point out, you know, there's information about Community Match Fund. Um, mostly again with like content that links to the obviously like Sustainable CT, because that's really where the source of the information lies. Um, information about the Sustainable CT certification process. Um, you know, that we had a little bit about the town of North Stonington's participation in the Sustainable CT process. Um, but really, I think where we have the most ability to um, curate the content is resources. So I just started thinking of things that I thought would be good to include, so this is really just like a brain dump for me. So I guess I would welcome, um, for reference, Craig, you had uh, shared. Um, I think I did it actually in the, sorry, sorry. You had shared something at the end of last. I know that James was working on um, changing from tip of the week to kind of resource, uh, current resource, current, current tips or something like that. Um, whatever language you had recommended, Craig, I gave to him and he said he was gonna do it, and I did follow up. Um, I'll, I'll follow up again, but I know that that was the last thing that he was looking to update. He said it would have to like cycle or something, but that, that was like last week or something, so I'll, I'll follow up with James, but um, uh, that was gonna highlight, you know, kind of one thing that's sort of on our minds for a given time that would kind of um, cycle in and out a little bit more. So something more current versus my thought at least was that resources would be just sort of a dump of everything from list of invasive species, and that's just taken from the North Stonington um, site to, you know, pesticide, pesticide-free landscaping, solar panel, you know, how, how to go about getting solar panels for consumer to sustain energy at home, you know, so I, I uh, home energy assessments, things that um, I just kind of either through Craig or just kind of sourced um, just myself, but um, if there's anything that you want to have added, and this is where I think I'll add the basic textile information, so I'll, I'll ask him to add that. Um, but please feel free um, to kind of submit anything that you think should be included here. I did also ask if we could add a link to this page to our Sustainable um, Sustainability Committee site, just in case somebody is visiting, you know, so that um, anybody visiting the Sustainability Committee site would be, also have the option to be linked to this particular page. Um, I didn't hear back from him on that yet either, so I'll circle back, but I just wanted to let you know that there, it finally has a little bit of content behind it. Um, and certainly welcome any ideas for additional content.
That's great. Thanks for doing all that.
Sure. And yeah, the, the, I don't know why this, um, I think it's because I had a couple of different things that were um, itemized out uh, from the, you know, green lawns, like the, the thing I had mentioned on Freakonomics, which was the, you know, how much energy use, um, mowing your lawn, a lot of times, you know, like once a week or something, how, how that, in, what that impact is. Um, so things like that are supposed to be on this one, but I think he was changing the icon, cause we had asked him, you know, to take away tip of the week and make it more not um, overpromising how often we were gonna be posting to this sort of gauging expectation, so um, I'll keep updating you, but I just wanted to share that. Um, wanted to go back to nomination for new committee secretary. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about desiring to be secretary. Popular uh, position apparently. I don't know, I, so maybe Pat, you better know the rules. Um, what happens? What happens if we don't have a secretary? What, what happens if we don't have a secretary?
A secretary, I mean, a chairman can be acting secretary. You just need somebody that's gonna post, then they post the minutes, you have to have they just have, everything has to get posted.
Right.
But the, I mean, beyond that, just that the agenda has to get posted, the minutes have to get posted.
Yeah, I, I was, I've always filed the agenda. Tula wasn't filing the agenda. Um, I was always doing that, and then I was just taking the minutes, um, you know, in her, since her absence, but um, she, she was not doing the agenda, she was just doing the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I mean, if, if no one is interested, I can continue to do the minutes. I just didn't know whether it has to be, I don't, I don't know whether that's like a, you know, whether you need to have an official secretary. I don't know if we wanna solicit more membership before we designate a secretary in case someone else joins that would fulfill that position, but I don't know what the rules, yeah, as I said, that's why I was asking you what the rules are, cause I don't know if I'm allowed to commit the minute.
Well, I know when I was uh, I was on one commission in town, I was secretary of that, and at the same time, there was an ad hoc committee in town. And I refused to be the secretary, but uh, the whole two years that the committee existed, I signed everything as acting secretary because it's a committee secretary, and nobody ever took it over. Anybody?
I see.
I guess this is the time where you say, who is not at the meeting? And perhaps they should be nominated and uh, voted into office as secretary and uh,
Well, I, I, I think certainly we'd be good if we can, I don't know how to do it, if we can uh, get somebody that wants to join the committee in that capacity, that would be best. They wouldn't have a different role and just do that, if they're willing to do just that, that would be fine. Some people don't mind doing just that.
Right. Yeah, we'll try to, let's try to find ourselves a secretary. Okay. Um, we don't have any public, so I think there is no public comment, but anything else that um, anyone else wants to add before we adjourn? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Do we have a, a meeting scheduled after this?
Oh, yes, thank you for asking. Um, I think we have, so actually, I think you, I'm glad that you brought that up, Craig. Because in our last meeting, what we discussed was um, oh, Antoinette had solicited our, for 2022, when we'd ha- like to have a regular scheduled meeting um, as opposed to these kind of special meetings, I, every single time, and um, the proposal was, and we'll see if everyone agrees, to do, to have a once per month regular scheduled meeting that we just kind of count on, and this is, this would be starting in 2022. And then we could call special meetings if we feel like, you know, the once per month, not, we're not moving things along fast enough. Um, so we could always schedule the special meetings, but just to do once per month for a regular meeting, if everybody in agreement of that.
That would work.
Okay, and um, that uh, we would try to keep this, this time slot for that, right, you know, maybe the first Tuesday of every month at seven PM, does that seem to work?
The first Tuesday works for me. I don't know. Or others.
Yep, that's good for me.
John, is that for you? Okay.
Um, just for me, uh, EDC meets, I think, that night, but usually at five thirty, so um, I will be available as I can be available to help with, help with the committee.
Oh, great. Thank you. Well, EDC where, meets on what night? On Tuesdays?
There's, they're supposed to meet on the first Tuesday of the month. Uh, and then planning and zoning, and they meet at five thirty. In recent times, it's been more special meetings. Um, I don't think next Tuesday they're having a meeting, cause it's election night. Uh, so it's one of those where as I don't think that there's an evening in which there's not much of a conflict. Uh, I can honestly say with other committees with, within the town. Um, but it's also, uh, I know that's a regular scheduled meeting for EDC, but I can't say that that's a reason not to schedule your meeting on, on that night. If you don't have cross-fallinated people, um, I may have some it may affect my ability to, to attend some meetings, but I'm not worried about that. I think it's one where I will try to be as, as uh, involved in this process as possible.
Should we try for the second Tuesday of every month instead then? So it's not, um-
Sometimes have a conflict on the second and third Tuesday.
Oh, okay, okay.
Next, next, the first Tuesday, November's election, I certainly, I'm not available then, but-
Right. Um, I think this is to start in the, in 2022. Um, for this year, the next meeting I have on the calendar for this um, for, for our committee is um, Tuesday, November ninth at seven PM. Does that still work for everyone?
No, okay. That works.
Okay, so I'll tell Antoinette first Tuesday of every month at seven PM, month, month, like you're otherwise from anybody, cause it sounds like second and third. I mean, we could do the fourth Tuesday of every month instead? Would that then be reconciling Pat and Nate's calendar?
First, the fourth, first, the fourth works for me. Um, yeah.
Does that work for you?
First works best.
Nate?
Either.
Okay, so maybe I'll, maybe I'll propose the fourth Tuesday of every month for a regular scheduled meeting. Um, but then our next one for this year will be the ninth at seven PM.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, maybe we have a field trip to Laurel Brook at some point. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay. Well, we are adjourned. I hope everybody has a nice evening. Safe drive, Craig and Nate. Um, in this weather, and stay dry, everybody.
Thanks much, everybody. Have a great night.
So much. Thank you. Take good care. Bye.